Yeah.
A lot of.
So I think I got it on my calendar.
Great.
Okay, Carrie, whenever you're ready.
Oh, yeah. Makes big difference.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Hutchinson City Council meeting for Tuesday, October twenty fifth, two thousand twenty-two. Call the meeting to order. Approve any agenda additions or corrections?
Can I con sign on how many additions or corrections for you?
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Motion by Pat, second by Mary to approve the agenda. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carrie. Invitation is Hope Family Church. Good evening.
Good evening. Pastor Tim Van den Langenberg from Hope Family Church. Because I didn't have enough to do this fall, I took on a teaching position in addition to pastoring at St. Cloud Christian School. I teach history. And so we've been talking about ancient empires. And so now I get, I told my class today, I was gonna be here tonight.
Talk to the Hutchinson Empire?
To talk to the Hutchinson Empire.
Are we the ancient empire?
This is on TV, I forgot, so.
Okay, everybody get up and let the real people come in.
I fit the age.
That was Matt Yonik's comment. And it just struck me that historically, we we serve God in all that we do. And I pray that according to the word that we read in Isaiah in the Old Testament about the kingdom of God being, it says, "Of the increase of his government and peace there will be no end." "From the throne of David and over his kingdom to order it and establish it with judgment and justice from that time forward even forever." And so I pray that peace, justice, mercy, strength, courage, and always keeping an eye and a vision to God's kingdom. You would be blessed because in your blessing, all people are blessed, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next to pledge of allegiance? Hi, pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution stands one nation under data indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Recognitions of gifts, donations, and community service to the city. Does anyone have anything tonight?
No, except I do want to thank that guy that runs all of the employees that run the sweepers in town that are busy picking up our leaves because it is awesome. And everybody is abiding by the rules and laying them out in nice rows and making it easy for that guy who's sucking up all those leaves. So big thanks to that department that is doing that work. I hear compliments all the time that it's one of the best thing our city does for everybody.
Guess what, Mary?
What?
Except for the mayor.
They miss me again.
You're on that street, nobody knows about.
Yeah, I'm on that, on that.
You're kind of on that hidden street there?
Well, I keep the goats off to go pass so they could, you know, come and pick up my leaves, but.
Well, you should be able to speed dial someone to tell them that he's coming to my leaves.
I'll try that.
Ask nicely.
No, it is a great, great thing. I see those guys running all over and they do a good job doing it, so. How is it going, John?
Uh, we're in the middle of the busiest time right now. Usually second and third week are the heaviest. So we'll be running through lunch and all day tomorrow, for sure.
Sounds good. Anything else? Any public comment? Citizens addressing the council, please come forward, state your name and address. Any rate, approval of minutes, we have the regular meeting minutes of October eleventh, two thousand twenty-two.
Make a motion to approve them?
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Dave to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried consent agenda. This will be done with one motion unless somebody pulls something off for discussion. Uh, A is approval of items for Roberts Road Southwest. That's letting number one, project number twenty-three dash oh one. We have two resolutions underneath there. First resolution, one five four nine nine, resolution ordering preparation of reports on improvements. And resolution number one five five zero zero, resolution receiving reports and calling for hearings on improvements. B is approval for items for Jefferson Street Southeast. Letting number four, project number twenty-three dash oh five. And two resolutions underneath there. One five five zero one, resolution ordering preparation of report on improvements. And resolution number one five five oh two, resolution receiving reports and calling for hearings on improvements. C is approval of resolution number one five five zero three, resolution adopting finding of facts and reason for approval of final plan for Ravenwood South. D is resolution, approval of resolution number one five five zero four. Resolution for, that took a bit of special assessment from the city of Hutchinson to McCloud County auditor. Uh, E is approval of engineering supplement agreement letter lists S E H incorporate for the twenty, two thousand twenty-three improvement projects. F is approval of of premise, permit application for the Brownton Baseball Association at River House Kitchen and Drinks. J is approval of issuing temporary liquor license to the Bobbin Barber Brewery Company on November twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two. And H is claims appropriation and contract payments. Anything, anybody wants to pull back? Entertain a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Pat, second by Mary to approve the consent agenda. Is there a hint? Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Uh, no public hearing. Uh, communication requests and petitions, nothing unfinished business, we haven't, nothing. Uh, no business. First reading of ordinance number twenty-two dash eight thirty-five, ordinance amending chapter ninety-five.
Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Park staff are recommending the addition of the following language, the current ordinance about dogs and animals in parks. Uh, the current ordinance reads, "All dogs and other domestic animals must be leashed in public parks except for the designated off-leash dog park. An animal owner or person having custody or control of the animal shall immediately clean up and dispose of any feces of the animal." And our requests would be to add the additional language stating, "All dogs and other domestic animals are not allowed on any of the designated athletic fields or in sports complexes at any time. Domestic animals are also not allowed in the park shelters slash facilities and their public restrooms or shower facilities." Um, over the last couple of years, we've seen an increase in patrons in the community utilizing some of our sports complexes or designated athletic fields as an off-leash dog park. Um, mostly the parks or athletic fields that have fences around them, meaning Veterans Memorial Field and Roberts Park. Um, at that time, they let their dogs or animals run off-leash. Um, and some may not clean up after their animals, resulting in a lot of staff time and resources. The other thing is our prepped athletic fields, um, our staff spend a lot of time to prep them and have them ready for um, games and practices that are used by our community members. And some of these animals that are left off-leash, um, have caused damage to the prepped fields. So as we love dogs in our parks, I mean, encourage using parks with animals. Um, this ordinance change would only include those designated athletic fields and complexes as stated in the ordinance change.
Then we've also had issues in in our restrooms correcting showers too.
Thank you, yes. Um, the other thing would be our public restroom facilities. And then downtown at our campground, we do have a shower facility as well. Um, and we have had an uptick in patrons using those to clean their animals. And then, um, s- some feces are left in the facilities afterwards. It's really a sanitary issue for especially our campground shower facilities that patrons are are paying to use those facilities when they're staying on site at our campground. Um, and we would just like to keep them out of the enclosed shelters and then our enclosed restroom and shower facilities, just for sanitary issues. Um, and then there are designated pet washing stations, um, around the community where people can go and, um, use those facilities to wash their pets. And hopefully, we would like to eliminate that service being done in our facilities in the parks.
Lynn, is there some kind of signage now that says at the athletic fields? I don't know.
We we do have a sign when you walk into Roberts Park, um, but with this ordinance change, that would help us to also promote and educate the public, um, about these changes that, you know, they're not not allowed inside the athletic fields, on the complexes, and then in the restrooms as well. So this is the first step, if we can get the ordinance changed, then we can do some education to our patrons and our community members to make sure that, um, we can help eliminate this problem.
Because Lynn, correct me if I'm wrong, right now there is signage at Roberts Park, but there's really nothing to enforce that.
Correct. We we did put a sign up this year that just says pets are not allowed in the complex. Um, the ordinance change, we can then put the the adopted city ordinance once adopted and then we can have some more, um, educational materials go out for the community. And I want to say, we do love animals in our parks. Um, we just want to make sure that they're utilized appropriately and encourage users to use our off-leash dog park because it is such a great park here in Hutchinson and, um, we hope that that is utilized for the usage that it's there for. And then we just, we want to keep our, um, athletic complexes and facilities when there's a lot of people too, that it's a safe place for everybody and not everyone is an animal lover too. When there, when there's a big group of people, um, in a gathering at Roberts Park, there tends to be a lot of people out there and also with VMF and, um, animals that are there might make some patrons a little more uncomfortable than others, so we just hope to keep it safe and friendly for everybody.
So is there going to be, you know, with the ordinance, is there going to be a fine if you're caught doing that? Is that something that would deter people?
Yeah, Mark, you want to explain ordinance violations?
Sure, so, um, the ordinance, if it gets approved, is going to be handled just like all of our other ordinances in our city code and that is that, um, this is going to be viewed as a misdemeanor crime. So if someone actually would end up getting a ticket or a criminal complaint against them, they'd have to go through the court process and the court normally does assess a fine against the people.
Okay. You talked about the restrooms and people using them to give their dogs a bath. Is that typically down?
Yeah, mostly at the campground that, um, people have used that facility because the showers are there.
Maybe there should be a sign somewhere that says where the dog wash stations are located in our city. I mean, it might not just be people who live here who are doing that, it could be somebody camping.
Yeah, we'll do some educational things once the ordinance is changed, but we'd like to just keep it as sanitary as possible for all of our users.
By education, Lynn, do you mean it, once the ordinance is passed, that signage would be put up at like Northwoods? And I mean, even when you go to any of the parks, whether it's firemen's, elk's, lions, um, it'd be nice to have, I don't know if it's possible, it'd be nice to have signage there because then, like honestly, if I see someone with their dog taking a, you know, what, I'd I'd go up and say, hey.
Yeah, signs will be the first step for educating and then we can put it out on our website, social media and make the newspaper and make sure the word gets out, so we know. Um, and now we've made a huge commitment in putting up the dog, um, doggy bag stations in a lot of our parks, so encouraging people to use those as well too. We see a lot of people using them, but we want to just encourage to keep our parks as clean as possible and friendly for everybody.
Right, telling how many bags you guys went through?
Um, I cannot remember the number. I think I shared it with Matt last year. It was a, we spend a lot of money on dog.
Yeah, pick up the bags.
Yes, yes. Thank you, thank you. I could get you that number because I did, I think I shared that with Matt last year because it was quite the quite the substantial number of bags we go through, but.
What it was.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was a lot. I can't remember either.
Yeah.
But we have made a commitment to making sure they're clean, so.
All right. Well, and you know, I know sometimes the comment is, well, why does the city have to pass another ordinance? Um, you know, I'll be honest, we've had incidents where either our staff or residents have made note of it to, and then becomes an issue with that individual. Um, whether it's harassing our staff or the individual, you know, along lines of why are you telling me what to do with my my pet? And so that's unfortunately why we've gotten to the point of having to to regulate it now within the within the city, so.
So can I ask you a question? Is it worse now than it was, say, two, three years ago?
I think we've seen an increase. Um, COVID might have changed things a lot and people who are home with their pets a lot more, spent a lot more time getting out with them. Uh, we've, we've seen just an uptick in people being outside with their animals too. Um, but I think it's always been that way, but it's gotten increasingly worse as I think off-leash dog parks are becoming more popular too. Um, and now that we do have one, but we only have one on one side of town where we don't have one on the other side of town. And people like to utilize that park, but it's, you know, maybe not as conveniently located to their house. Um, but I think we've, we've seen it over the last couple of years, but it has gotten worse just in recent years.
Thank you.
I would say specifically the fenced in.
Yes.
Complexes that we're referencing.
Because you can let the dog run, right?
Well, I I see a guy down at Tutton Park all the time with his dog, so.
I don't have that option. I have an eleven-year golden and when he's off the lease, it's like he's shot out of a cannon, so he doesn't get off. And we get along.
And you, you see dogs, like I walk my dog and when I go by, I'm always by South Park and around that way and I see dogs loose, you know, when they're playing.
A lot, yeah.
Frisbee a lot and, I mean, they're minding their dog, but that doesn't mean their dog doesn't go over somewhere and do his duty and then come back, you know?
Yeah, and I never want to encourage people not to bring their dogs into the parks, but just to do it appropriately and make sure it's a good space for everybody to be there.
Yeah, I think the important thing to remember is, you know, there is the leash requirement unless you're in the dog park. So, because I see a lot of dogs too that just aren't leashed, so. And I realize that some are better than others, but, you know, I think there's some concerns even with other residents on you know, whether that unleashed dog would become an issue, so.
I mean, we do get a lot of people inside, like Roberts Park, for example, and I know Chad, you can speak to this if you know, there on Saturday mornings, there's a lot of people for, um, soccer, soccer games and youth soccer out there and um, there's a lot of people in a small confined space and people will bring their pets with. Um, and it does make some patrons uncomfortable more than others being in a small space and some people are not as um, pet lovers as others, so it just, to be respectful of others as well too in the community.
I think we've taken our, I've gone and watched our grandkids who live in La Coruña, I mean, like-sized town and they don't allow. Because we brought ours with, we had it on the leash, we're walking up to watch flag football, it's like, ah! You gotta take it back to the car.
It's a pretty common practice, um, in parks throughout the state of Minnesota to not allow them within certain, certain parameters of certain parks and athletic complexes.
Yeah, they don't even allow them on leash, so I mean, that's.
Correct.
Just not allowed, so.
And Kato's the same way?
Yes.
So how's the park south of Park Elementary? That pretty, that's pretty a lot of animals on that.
North Park?
Yeah, North Park.
The one with the disc golf?
Yeah.
Yes, there's a lot of animals in that park as well. Lots of users of that one with dogs.
Well, it's technically South Park.
Oh, yeah, sorry, South Park, not North Park. North Park's the one with the school in it, yes. Yeah, there's a lot of usage of that park for animals.
Entertain a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve it.
I'd second it.
Motion by Chad, second by Dave to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, Carrie.
Thank you.
Uh, setting budget workshop enterprise funds for November twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two at four P M.
Yeah, Mayor, Council, this will be our fourth budget workshop, so we'll go over enterprise funds and probably just have a highlight of where we're at before our truth and taxation hearing in early December, so.
I'll make a motion to approve that workshop on November twenty-second.
Sure. Motion by Mary, second by Pat to set the workshop. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Right.
I suppose, Carrie. Governance, uh, we have the Hutchinson Utilities Commission minutes from August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. City of Hutchinson Financial Report and Investment Reports for September twenty-two. September twenty-twenty-two. Uh, Public Arts Commission Minutes from September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Planning Commission Minutes from September twentieth, two thousand twenty-two. Hutchinson Housing redevelopment authority board minutes from September twentieth, two thousand twenty-two. John, you have anything else for us?
It may have felt perhaps like Halloween was a little bit early, but I don't know if, uh, we had a little problem with our Hawk system crossing at Montana Highway. Highway seven and.
Nobody and the lights were flashing.
There was some damage, um, accidental damage to one of the push buttons is what the problem was and it was. So we've turned that off until we can get that repaired.
Yeah, I was approaching from the west and I was like, there's nobody anywhere around.
Right, right, and it, and it would, uh, it would change between yellow and red also, so, um, you know, all kinds of weird things were going on with it, but, um, that's, that's that, so it'll be off for a little while here. The hope is that we can get it fixed very shortly and get that back up again, so. Other than that, uh, we talked about the leaves, that's, um, and next is get ready for snow, so.
Yeah, they drive, I I've noticed a couple, you know, you said like that a lot of them do do the tross. If it's in a big round pile, do they drive by it?
Uh, it depends, yeah.
I did see that.
It depends, um, and and sometimes, uh, what's in there is also a reason we'll skip them. And we try to get a hold of them too. Um, they'll ping it and say, hey, you know, check this house out and we'll try and connect up with them and square things away, so.
It's just difficult to do a long, narrow.
When you have a skinny lot.
When you have a smaller lot and you have leaves this high.
Yeah, no, and we get that, you know, and and that's, yeah, try to keep it as even as you can, that's all you can do, so.
Right.
Yeah, use, use it all, so. All right, thanks.
Thanks, John. Chief, your person, you have anything for us? Lynn, do you have anything else? Mark, do you have anything else for us? Oh, jeepers, let's see. Uh, Dave, start with you.
Very good, appreciate that. Uh, as most probably don't know, I sit on the Mid-Minnesota Development Commission, uh, which is in Willmar, covers the four county area. But also sit on the subcommittee, it's called the, uh, R T C C, which is Regional Transportation Resource Coordinator, uh, Coordinators. Back in, one of those probably five, six months, months ago now, uh, the M M D C applied for a grant from, uh, A A R P to help residents in the city of Hutchinson that are fifty-plus years old had, don't drive or whatever the case may be, but anyway, they they purchased some over twelve thousand dollars worth of tokens, and that's a lot of tokens, uh, for trailblazers, typically it was for trailblazers. And, uh, so today in our Zoom meeting, uh, half of that hasn't been used yet even in the, uh, in the city. And it's typically in the city, but it covers all the, uh, residential areas, it covers the homes, it covers, uh, not only living facilities, but medical facilities and that type of thing, getting to hospitals, getting to appointments, getting to whatever. And it's a little disappointing, I don't know if it wasn't uh, related enough to the individuals or what it, what it could be, but I know they're doing a, um, a study to try and figure out why people are not using that, uh, that service. Um, so typically, it is out there for that use. I think it's short-lived at this particular point in time. But I think the tokens, if you call Terry Smith at the Regional Transportation Resource, uh, he is the coordinator, at three two zero two six two five eight five nine, he would definitely make sure that you get tokens. And you probably could get, I I wouldn't say a number, but I'd guess somewhere between six and twelve, uh, tokens you could get. So it's a service that we've tried to, throughout all the counties, because that's what the real transportation, uh, coordinators do is try and reach out to all the people that are fifty and above that don't have that ability to either drive, don't want to drive, or age maybe have something to do with that, but, uh, they pick them up at their house and, uh, and would bring them back after a certain amount of time, of course, because it's not the scheduled route, but, uh, yeah, I would encourage, if you haven't tried it, give it a shot, you might, uh, you might like it, so. Just encouraging the fifteen above citizens that don't drive, um, to maybe consider that. And again, that number is three two zero two six two five eight five nine, and that's Terry Smith. He does a fantastic job with that, uh, subcommittee, so.
They, a lot of people, how did they become aware of this? You said they contacted and do.
Well, the contacts, when they started out, they were going to like Woodstone, Avron Homes, uh, Presbyterian Homes, they went to, uh,
Harmony River.
Care Center out on the, what can I ever think of that name?
Harmony River.
Oh, I was, how was I saying, Birds, but it is Bird, but, uh.
Harmony River.
Yeah, Harmony River. And and those places and offer them to the staff there to give them to people that want to go for ride. It it helps make them somewhat independent. Well, now I've come to find out Harmony River says most of their residents are probably not able to do that on their own, so it takes someone to be with them. And, uh, so that one probably didn't work out too well. It was the one I know has used some, I know Avron Homes has used some, uh, and that type of thing, but that's how they, it was publicized, uh, on, I want to say Channel Ten back when, but, uh, again, people see things, people forget things, people don't use things, so. That is, uh, one of the things that is, uh, uh, we don't want to give the grant money back to A A R P, let alone, I don't think they want it back. But, uh, we don't want to give it back because of lack of interest in something because I'm sure they'll have other grants that would, uh, come up and we would want to be aware of those grants to, uh, uh, be able to participate in them, so.
I would think like Park Towers, Evergreen, I mean, a lot of those people are.
Green, yeah, and they all, I have that ability to have those that are fifteen above and don't, don't drive.
The Oaks, you know, some of those people.
And it doesn't make it, and I, I think that, no, I'm not going to say that, so I'll just say stay with the fifteen above, so.
Anything else, Steve?
Oh, that's it. Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, I just, you know, to kind of pigtail off of what Mary said earlier, the leaf pickup is in full force and it works great. I, um, we've got old oak trees, so I truly appreciate the service because otherwise I remember using my father-in-law's gravity boxes, I had so many leaves to, and it's just nice, so people take advantage of it.
Okay.
I don't have anything extra tonight.
Mary?
Hmm, well, Monday night is Halloween, so. Well, it's, it's an important night for children. They are out and about and they like to have fun. But we also need to be very wary that they are out and having fun. You know, don't be driving too fast down the street. Keep your lights on so the kids can see where your house, your house is. Just be good and have fun, you know? And it's going to be a nice Monday, I think, so.
Mary, whether you hand me out. Maybe we can come by your house.
Of course you can. I will have candy.
Full-size candy bars or party size?
We're pressing issues here in front of the council.
We've stopped at Mary's house, she puts on a pretty good spread, so.
Oh, enjoy that holiday.
Thanks, Mary. Matt?
I'm just a reminder to council that the annual recognition event is next Thursday at five thirty. I'm just a reminder to council that the inner recognition event is next Thursday at five-thirty. If you have an RSVP, please do that today and tomorrow with the latest. And then just another quick reminder that our next council meeting will be at four o'clock on the, the eighth with the election being that day, so. That's it.
Um, just wanted to ask anybody out in the community that if you want to serve on a committee or board or commission, please uh, come down and um, get an interest form at the city here. Uh, we have some spots open. So if you're interested in seeing the inner workings, the, come on down and sign up to join. Uh, Melissa, the early voting is here, correct? And from what times is at?
It's eight to four Monday through Friday, and then we're open the Saturday before the election from ten to three, and then the day before the election from eight to five.
All right, thank you. So uh, early voting, just come down, see Melissa. Uh, hello, what is uh?
Gary, maybe I'll just note, um, you know, I sent this out to the council, but we're looking for one planning commission member. Uh, we need two people for our park erects and community headboard. We need three keeper, people for the charter commission, uh, a person for the public arts commission and a person for the bike and pedestrian commission. When we talk about needing bodies, that's, and my quick math says we're going about eight to ten openings there, so.
What do you want?
On November third.
Mary, anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion about that, second by Chad to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.